Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the October 7th, 2021 meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. As you can no doubt see, this meeting is being held via pursuant to Dr. 417 of the laws of 2021. And until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments and to pre-register to speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website. If the live stream cannot be seen on the town portal, please go to the YouTube website and select the CTV Southampton channel. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but did not pre-register, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I'd ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and We will be starting this meeting with the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Sutton will mute the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you are having difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, there are a few public hearings that will not be heard tonight, meaning they'll be adjourned. So please listen to hear when they will be rescheduled for. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until October 22nd, 2021. Those comments can be addressed to the board secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at town hall. And with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, minutes are approved. And now we can go on to adjournments.
Okay. Item three on the agenda, which is Grant, Lerner. Um, Suffolk County Tax Map 900 dash 351 dash 223 in Eastport on 10 River Avenue. I'm going to move that that's re-advertised to our 1021 meeting.
Okay, re-advertized. No vote.
No vote. Okay, then four is Barbara A. Marks Revocable Trust. That's going to be re-advertized to our March 17th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Okay, that's re-advertized, so no vote.
Okay.
Okay, let me go to item 13 on the agenda, which is, excuse me, East Quogue 535 Realty, Inc. Move to adjourn that to our 11-4 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, on the decision calendar, I have Mark and Kelly Hannon. I'll move to reopen that so we can accept written submissions.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now, now I'm going to move to close it for a determination tonight.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Uh, sorry, excuse me, one second, please. Uh, back to the beginning of the decision calendar. Matthew J. Corley will be, uh, will have a determination for that on 1021. Kurt Stelton Paul will have a determination for him on 1021. Stephanie Davis, I'll move to reopen Stephanie Davis for written submissions.
Hold on, before you do that, on the ones that we, that we, you just did, Corley and Stelton Paul, do we have a second on the motion to adjourn till 1021?
You want me to do all the 1021s?
You could do them all at once if you want.
Yeah, let's do that, alright?
Okay, let's keep going then.
Next one is LPD 4 LLC. Um, next one is Joseph Muznicki and Charlene Quinlan. Um, let's see, as we go down the page. Nice Lex Real Estate Home Development Corp., Scott Schlechter, Schlechter, and 85 Eastway LLC. They will all be for 1021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, going back to Stephanie Davis, I'll move to reopen that and to accept written submissions.
Do we have a second? Uh, Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Uh, now I'll move to close Stephanie Davis for a determination later this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 111 Schwanks LLC, I'll move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Second.
Um, Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now I'll move to close it for a determination later this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town Southampton Housing Authority, 86 Vale Avenue, I'll move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now I'll move to close that 86 Vale Avenue, one, two, for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Right, Town Southampton Housing Authority, 116 Vale Avenue, I'll move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Uh, now I'll move to close, uh, close, uh, 116 Vale Avenue, uh, for a determination this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, Town Southampton Housing Authority, 69 Old Quogue Road. Uh, make a motion to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
And now I'll move to close it for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, Hazy Wolf LLC, I'll move to reopen, uh, to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now I'll motion to close Hazy Wolf LLC for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Michael and Amy O'Brien, I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now I'll move to close Michael and Amy O'Brien for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed.
Okay, Karen and Brian Coyle, I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now I'll move to close Karen and Brian Coyle for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, Richard Stott, I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Now I'll move to close Richard Stott for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, that's, that's what I got. You all right with that, Kate?
Yep.
Okay, going back to the beginning of the agenda, item one on the agenda is a minor variance review. 1625 New York Path LLC, 1625 New York Path, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900 dash 22 dash 1 dash 60.8. Applicant request relief from 330 dash 11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a proposed lot coverage of 5.6%, where a maximum of 5% is permitted for a proposed dwelling with attached porches and decks and a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
This is a minor variance review, there is no public hearing. Minor variance reviews, so I'll move to close it with a determination later this evening.
Second.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item two on the new
Anthony, is your video working now? Is it, is it, it's not working?
It's volume's not working.
Wow.
He said it's an old, he said it's an old computer, so he doesn't think it's, it's gonna get rebooted.
Okay, wow, wow. I'm sorry, Keith.
It's all right. Item two on the new application is Donna Cook, 19 Crestview Drive, then Remsenburg slash Beyond. Suffolk County Tax Map 900 dash 369 dash 1 dash 68.1. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed carport and non-conforming lot. One, 330 dash 11 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback of five feet where 20 feet is required. And 330 dash 84D pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 863.15 cubic feet and any other relief necessary. In addition to clarify the records, the existing dwelling shows a rear yard setback of 25 feet where 60 feet was required when the house was built in 1958.
Board has jurisdiction and we're looking for Eileen Rowan, who I see though. There we go.
Yep, okay. Good evening, Eileen, how are you?
Thanks to see you all again.
Good, good. Um, same here. Uh, just to swear you in, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
Eileen Berlin, City Westwood Drive, Corham, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can tell us about the application.
Okay, before I start, I just heard that I'm indicating a foot setback to the carport. It's five feet to the uprights, but it's actually four feet to the roof, and that's what I had on the application. So I don't know if that causes us any problems. You might want to think about that. Um, okay, I'll make my presentation.
Sure.
Okay, so as indicated, the variance is requested our first side yard setback of four feet and 20 is required and a pyramid encroachment of 863 cubic feet. Dimensions of the carport are 16 feet by 30 feet. Lowest height on the outside of the carport is seven and a half feet. The highest is 11 feet where joint is the dwelling. Property owner is handicapped. She has a handicap working pass from the town of Southampton. Her handicap is an autoimmune disease that affects her joints. She is quite fearful of falling. The scare is exacerbated during inclement weather. Carport directly attached to the front porch with steps to the porch for access would allow for her to enter and exit automobile more safely during times that the pavement is covered with snow or ice. In the event of a fall, she is unable to get up from ground on her own. The property owner also proposes to install solar panels on her dwelling in the very near future. The solar application is ready for submission to the town building department pending the outcome of this application before the board tonight. The additional horizontal surface of the carport will allow for the installation of a sufficient number of solar panels to bring the property owner's electric usage down to zero. Roof dimensions of the carport, according to the solar installation company, the minimum required for the safe and adequate installation of the panels to be installed on the carport in addition to the panels on the dwelling, allowing for the adequate number of panels to bring the property owner's electric usage to zero. The carport would have its southern exposure, which is optimum for solar energy collection. This is the most efficient location. The carport can't be located on the opposite side of the house as there is empty and in-ground pool. The proposed location is the only available location. According to town records, there have been a number of variances granted in this neighborhood. A great many of the dwellings have been worked before of zoning setbacks. There are two zoning board of appeal approvals in this neighborhood that relate to the variances requested as part of this application. At 11 Crestview Drive, property located two laps away from Suffolk property, on September 5th, 2019, the board made a decision, decision number D019114, granted a pyramid encroachment of 3,425 for a second story addition. At 13 Heather Drive, the next street over, a property that is approximately 300 feet from Suffolk property, on May 5th, 2016, decision number D016051, granted a side yard setback variance of one and a half feet for an existing shed and a pyramid encroachment for same shed of 210 cubic feet. It's submitted to Ms. Candace to call five letters from adjacent property owners stating support of the relief requested in this application. Um, were they received? Because I overnighted them to Candace this week and I'm now learning that she's out with surgery. So I just want to make sure that the board has access to these five letters.
Well, if they've been submitted, we got them.
You know, we'll, we'll get them, yeah. The board will get them. If you sent them this week, then no, it's not like.
Okay.
But they'll get them.
I'll continue then, thank you. Additionally, I was unaware of weeks ago, there was a question with regard to the six-foot fence located in the front yard. The denial issued two weeks ago states that the six-foot fence was built without benefit of permit, which is true. However, a permit was subsequently issued and not one, but two certificates of compliance were issued to six-foot fence. CO number C170046 issued February 14th, 2017 indicates, quote unquote, "pool with code compliant barrier, six-foot fence is per survey dated December 23rd, 2016," end quote. Official certificate number A170171 issued the same day, February 14th, 2017, is for a six-foot fence. Survey dated December 23rd, 2016 that the CO refers to, copy of which is in the town file for that permit, CO, indicates the six-foot fence, which presently exists. I have a copy of that survey of the town, um, although maybe perhaps the board is going to oppose. A portion of the six-foot fence is located in the required front yard, is located 20 feet back from the property line and is behind a burn planted with vegetation. The fence cannot be seen from the road, and I do have photo press indicating this.
Okay, but, but I, I need, no, hold on. This, this application has not been advertised for the issue of the fence, okay, number one. Number two, um, I don't know if you are familiar with how we handle six-foot fences. Now, I know you mentioned that it's a pool fence, um, and that it was, that it's setback 20 feet. If the town, uh, building department says that you don't need a variance for it, then you can keep it there. If they say you need a variance for it, I will tell you that it is extremely rare and only under some unique circumstances would we ever grant relief for a six-foot fence in the front yard.
Okay, I do understand that, and the building department relayed that to me. But my question was, I didn't know if I could ask this board for clarification because it's listed on a CO. It's listed on the survey that the CO
We, we have, we have COs and certificates of compliance that are issued in error all the time, so, okay, so.
But, but I, I, listen, I just also pulled up what you were talking about, that CO. And the survey that's attached for that, you're right, it does show a six-foot fence in some parts, but not at the top um, by Crestview Drive. If you look at the survey attached to the CO for that, it says four-foot stockade fence and you have a six-foot PVC fence there. So at the very least, that part's not compliant.
The fence goes somewhat parallel to Crestview, it's actually at a bit of an angle. It's on the 2016 survey and it says six-foot PVC fence.
Not on the property line, it says four, it says four-foot stockade fence on the property line.
Correct, but across the front, it says 60.
Yeah, well, what I'm suggesting, Eileen, is that you have a more detailed conversation with the building department about it. If you think, a, a, and you're, and the applicant wants to request the additional relief for the six-foot fence, you're certainly entitled to, you know, to do that. Um, I don't know whether it would be to amend this application or submit a new application, that's another discussion, but, but, um, you're entitled to do it, but I will tell you that it is extremely rare for us to grant relief for six, six fences in front yards. On the other hand, they may tell you that you, that you, that you, uh, that you don't need a variance for it. I don't know, but I, I would, I would pursue it with them first and then based on that conversation, let, you know, let Candace know and we'll figure out what's
Okay, I did have a conversation with both Candace and Marge, and they both said that I need a variance for it. I just thought that perhaps the board could clarify on our behalf, but you're explaining to me now that's not how it works.
Well, well, the, the thing about it is that this application hasn't been advertised, the neighbors haven't been notified of, of that as part of the relief that you're requesting. So at a minimum, I think, speaking for myself, we would want to re-advertize the application so that the neighbors are notified that you're asking for this additional relief.
Okay, um, I do understand how that works. I do know if that would be the case because it's listed on a CO, but as you say, that's
It, it's not fair to the neighbors. If the neighbors don't know that you're, you're going to be asking for this relief. One thing, if it were like a, you know, a tiny, you know, measurement difference in terms of the relief that you are requesting, but if nothing's mentioned in the application, nothing's mentioned in the notice of this relief, then the neighbors aren't, aren't being noticed for, for that. Um, and I, and I don't see a six-foot fence in the front yard as being any other, necessarily. It could be any other relief necessary, but I would want the neighbors to notify.
Um, understood, understood.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I will, I was going to ask the board to give me a clarification, but it seems the board has already done that, thank you. Um, and I just want to go on to say that, you know, I believe requested variances, if the board chooses to grant, would not cause undesirable change to the neighborhood. Further, there are five letters from the adjacent property owners that were in agreement with that. And further, I believe the construction of the carport and the additional roof area to support the solar panels would be a benefit for both the applicant and the community at large. So if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We digress from the building department comments, which may be related to some of the issues you already went over. Have you seen the building department comments that we received or no?
Denial, I haven't, denial was issued on September 20th. I haven't had anything since then.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll just read them into the records so you, so you can know what they are. This is from Marjorie Riley, Riley Golee Inspector. Number one, the survey shall be revised to indicate the side yard setback to the proposed carport. I was going to ask you for that anyway because I noticed that that measurement was missing. Um, although maybe you've already dealt with that, I don't know.
It's not the site plan that I submitted.
Okay, all right, number, number two, but we generally will refer to both the survey and the site plan, but anyway. Okay, number two, the eight-foot by 10-foot framed shed is in a non-conforming location. This shed shall be removed or relocated to a conforming location. Three, getting to the fence, the existing six-foot fence, one, was constructed without the benefit of a building department and shall be legalized. Two, the portion of the six-foot fence on the required front yard shall be removed, relocated, or relief requested from the zoning board. Four, although variance relief is not required for the hot tub, um, and the Trex deck, the application shall apply, the applicant shall apply to the building department to legalize the structures. Six, it shall be noted that the zoning district was beat at the time the dwelling was constructed. Final surveys were not required at that time, however, the town aerials show the dwelling approximately in its existing location. So, anyway, so that, that's what they, what, that's what, what Marjorie mentioned. And so when we were talking about your, I would say it was the building department about the fence, these issues, I would want you to discuss with her as well.
Okay, will do.
Yeah. Also, you mentioned the measurement was four feet, not five feet?
Four feet to the overhang, five feet to the upright.
Okay, okay. Have you been in touch with the neighbor, I believe it's to the south, the one that's most impacted?
Yeah.
Okay, and that, that neighbor doesn't object?
He's one of the neighbors that, um, gave a letter that they're aware of the application and they were supporting the application.
Okay, okay, well, that's good, that's good. Um, you know, I, I have to say sometimes with cars being parked pretty close to property lines, there can be, you know, noise issues, so, um, I guess they're not concerned about that.
All right, no, that's where the car gets parked without the benefit of a carport anyway.
I understand. Yeah, yeah, I totally understand. Okay, um.
Certainly with the support of the neighbor from south, I don't have an issue with the carport. Um, but I think what Adam was talking about with the six-foot fence is that's a pretty heavy lift for a variance for a six-foot fence in the front yard. So I don't know if you have a game plan as to how you want to address that, and you can certainly, I guess, submit a new application or revise this application and come back and we'll have the neighbors noticed and we can discuss the six-foot fence. Or is that something that you'd be more inclined to not pursue and put in a conforming fence? I mean, certainly, a six-foot fence, I can't recall a fence, this much fencing in a front yard being approved. It's a pretty tough variance.
I have discussed it with my clients and the different options, and obviously to protect the fence where it is. Obviously, she would prefer to have a six-foot fence since it's including a pool. Um, moving the fence back 20 feet could be conforming and out of the required front yard. It's in a position where it makes access to her existing sanitary system a little uncomfortable. So she would have to actually consider topping the fence. I don't know if you can do that with PVC, but bring it down to four feet.
Yeah, yeah, so the precedent that would create, Eileen, if we, if we took the argument that, well, if you have a pool in your yard, then you should have a fixed six-foot fence in, in the front yard. Our board will be bombarded for then, for eternity with applications for people asking for six-foot fences in front yards because of pools. Not going to happen. Not going to happen.
It's also, it's also like twenty-five feet from the pool.
Right, right.
Right now.
Yeah, we've gotten all different arguments. The, the, the one argument that we, that we go with, um, you know, generally is if the, the property is being used for food production and, and they want to stop deer from ju- jumping in and destroying crops. And that is a situation we grant, um, you know, six-foot or higher fences. But in most, almost invariably, otherwise we don't. Including for those, you know, that's a, a, a new one with a, with a pool, but we've had all kinds of arguments made. Um, and we are pretty, pretty firm on this. And our, you know, my, my inclination is if the, you know, if the town board wants to change fence heights, well, you, you, people can feel free to go to them, but we're, we're not inclined to do it in most circumstances.
Okay, so I am listening to the board and I want to go with the best for my client. So can we just put into the decision that we will move the fence or reduce the board height?
Yep, yep, okay.
Thank you.
You didn't need it to be conformer, that's all.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions of members of the board or Katie or Anthony? I know Anthony, we probably can't, you can't talk.
Can, can you hear me now?
You can hear you now, wow, it works.
There we go.
Hey, like that.
Is there, is there support? Go ahead, Meg.
Go, go ahead, Katie.
Oh, no, I just was going to ask, I know Cornelius said he was okay with the carport. I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the board is, as well.
I am.
You know, I have, I have mixed emotions about it, although I know we have approved other carports and, um, but what I do have concern about is the, um, approving a carport and then that in, does that in fact also approve the solar panels on top of that? Because, uh, you know, my experience is that there's quite a number of residents who consider solar, solar panels to be unattractive. So here we go, you know, if we approve this carport, then does that mean that the solar panels are approved? Or is that a separate approval?
Um, yeah, no, the, the.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to have them in my, you know, looking at my property from four feet next to it.
They're on top, they're on top of the, um, they're on top of the carport, so they don't need a, you know, if they were on the ground, I think they may need separate approvals, but if they're on top of the structure, you know, I think the town probably encourages solar energy.
So, so Mike, your point is that having solar panels so close to the property line could be a detriment for the neighbors?
Well, if I'm a, a neighbor to the left of this and I'm looking out my second floor window, you know, I'm not only seeing a carport, but I'm seeing solar panels. I just am kind of, I'm talking, thinking out loud about, uh, that and how, you know, how we feel about it or how we look upon that, is that, um, is that something I don't recall us, uh, having before us in the past?
Eileen, were you about to say something when somebody was speaking?
Well, I'm, I'm just listening to what Mr. Daly is stating. And number one, a solar panel application is completely separate from this. They only mention it because, you know, we're all concerned about greenhouse gases these days. Um, the property owner coming down from zero electrical usage and she would have to have the additional horizontal space. Um, I am unaware at this point whether there is a setback for solar panels. I actually never even thought to think into that. But, um, I know, I know this particular property owner is friendly with people that are around her and she has had conversations with him. I'm sure he is not unaware of the solar panels and is not part of this application. So I would just say that. I just brought it up because I thought it was a good idea, you know, to state that the solar panels were going to be on it, bringing the usage down.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, Mike, I can't recall at any time us ever having an application for relief for solar panels. Um, yeah, it's an interesting thing that you brought it up. But, I mean, if, for example, we, you know, decided to deny this application because we thought solar, solar panels might go up, um, you know, on the area where we rent, by the carport where we're renting the variance relief. Um, I don't know that we would be on very solid footing if the application wasn't for a variance for, for the solar panels to be given. But on the other hand, um, you know, maybe it's something the building department needs to look into.
She stays.
Well, that's a separate application, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As a support for the application too. Even though the solar panels aren't part of the application, I understand.
That's right. They're not part of the application and there will be a formal application process to the town for them. Uh, and that'll be dealt with during that application. Okay, thank you. Clarification received.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening on Zoom? Connection with this application, which is the application of Cook. This is the property located at nineteen Crestview Drive in Remsenburg. If you would like to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands, okay. If not, Grunilious, it is yours.
All right, Eileen, are you clear on the survey, what you need to do? You got to add the, the car, the call off for the carport distance? And then the shed is going to need to either be labeled to be removed or shown in a conforming location. And then I had a question, I guess it's for Katie. For the six, the six-foot fence that's showing on the survey, do we need that either removed or labeled, um, in some fashion that it's going to be removed? Or can we, should you leave it on there as is and just deal with it, um, as part of a building department application?
No, I, I think, I think since the survey is already being revised, that it should say wherever the, the fence is coming down is coming down.
Okay, so.
Can I just get something, please? I'm going to try and focus again, she had said that I could have the site plan revised or the survey revised. So we had the site plan revised. So that site plan does say that that is to be moved to a conforming location. I believe it shows, um, a setback, I can double check that. Um, it was also overnighted to Candace in that package with the letters from the property owner. So if you don't have the property owner letters, you don't have that site plan either.
A re- a revised site plan, you mean?
Yes.
Does the, does the revised site plan say that it's based on a survey? Because that information needs to be on a site plan. It does? Okay.
And it says that it's based on, um, I think it's an April two thousand twenty-one survey. Candace wanted, Candace wanted me to indicate that.
Sure, I mean, yes, if the site, if the site plan, if the site plan has everything we need on it, you know, that's, that's fine too.
Yeah, well, this is for the site plan rather than the survey and I'm, I'm looking at it, it's, the, the site plan does have the mentions. Um, so that's, that's good.
I don't know that I have.
Anything.
What's that?
You want me to revise anything or we're good with?
The, the site plan you're referring to, I don't know, but I have it, does it, does it show the shed in the conforming location?
Yes.
It does, okay. And then what about the, uh, the fence that needs to be removed or lowered to four feet? Does that reference on there? Okay, so we need, we need something that that would show it.
Um, that it's going to be removed because if it indicates six-foot fence on, in multiple spots, I think the six-foot PVC fence and what Kenny was referring to. Um, any, any fence that is non-conforming, we need to indicate on the site plan that it's either to be moved to a, or, or, basically made, made to conform, essentially, whether that means it's cut, you're reduced in, in height, um, or, or otherwise. Um, yeah, so the site plan would need to be revised for that.
Do you think you could get that done by October twenty-second?
I.
Or not too soon?
I believe I can get that done, but I did hear your conversation earlier. So, um, I'll, I'll say yes and I'll do my best to have it done.
Okay, all right, I want to move to close the public hearing, leaving open for written submissions only until October twenty-second with a written decision on November fourth.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Jerbo Tsai, uh, thank you for being here this evening, Eileen, I'm not sure if you have any more.
Thanks for the time, I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem, all right. Have the rest of you night, thanks, bye.
Item five on the agenda is Stephen and Wendy Kimbor. Twenty-one, Ocre Lane in Chinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash two eleven, dash two, dash twenty-two. Applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed fifteen-by-seventeen swimming pool. Three thirty dash eleven, residential district stable with dimensional regulations. The accessory distance from street, front yard setback of forty-five feet where ninety feet is required. And two, three thirty dash seventy-six D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required front yard with a principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Bailey.
Good evening, Bailey Larkin with Bennett Reed Offices at two twelve Windmill Lane in Southampton. Um, this is an application for construction of a new swimming pool. Uh, the subject property, I don't know, can I share my screen?
Yes.
All right, let me share the screen because it's easiest to explain. So.
Okay, we see it.
Perfect, all right. This is a through lot located on Ocre, uh, with frontage on the north on New Lane. Um, the property is twenty-one thousand square feet and located in R sixty zoning district, so it is non-conforming. Um, it's already developed with a single-family home in the southern portion of the property and it has a functional front yard on Ocre. Um, and a detached garage with a driveway access off of New Lane. Um, we're proposing a clearly modest pool fifteen by twenty-seven, uh, forty-five feet off of New Lane. Um, I'm very glad I did this, but I did submit with the impact, uh, with the package a study of a bunch of variances that had been granted in the surrounding area. Um, this is the property here. Uh, variances have previously been granted by this board, um, for pools on the six properties that are shown on the area. Uh, relief was granted for setbacks ranging from thirty-three point six feet, um, up until about sixty feet. Uh, the adjacent property to the west, uh, it actually received a variance for a similar relief to what is sought here, forty-four point five feet, uh, we're requesting forty-five. Um, let me go back to the survey. Now, the placement of the pools is kind of dictated by the location of the existing sanitary system and the rear of the house as well. We're maintaining our twenty-foot separation distance, which is required. Um, and also there's a tree adjacent to the driveway here, we're trying to preserve. So the pool would be located kind of in this open space, um, in the rear of the property. Um, I did submit just today two letters that we received. Um, one is from Terry and Rick Stone, which is this property to the north, on the north side of New Lane. And, uh, we also received a letter from Christian Cuffeli, who is the property to the east. Uh, both of them had said that they don't have any objection to this application. Um, as you can see from the aerial, uh, an in-ground pool is a common accessory structure to the area. Uh, given the non-conforming nature of this, this kind of development area, um, the artist area in Chinacock Hills. Um, I think the, the relief granted would not be out of character with the neighboring properties. Um, we have also just as a note, designed the, located the pool so it complies with the thirty-foot side yard setback. So the only relief sought is off of the, uh, northern property line, New Lane. Um, and again, it's, it's simply because of the two front yards and the size of this property in the R sixty zoning district. Um, so I don't know if anyone has any questions about the application.
Property's burdened by two front yards, that creates, I think, largely creates the situation. Yeah, yeah. So, so those are my, that's my only comment about it. I'm not sure where, where the, where other. Of this application.
Seems like it's going to be developed pretty similar to the property to the west. I mean, that, that property has a pool in about the same location. Um, and with the neighbor to the east also, uh, you said he submitted some more, support to it as well. Um, I don't have an issue.
He also received a variance for a pool in his rear yard. The aerials don't show it, but there is a pool variance granted to the neighbor to the east as well.
Gotcha.
Yeah, when we have people with, with two or more front yards, it's not unusual that we grant relief for a pool relocated in what technically is the front yard. Um, so, that, so that, that's, you know, one aspect of the application. And as far as setback relief, um, uh, you know, i- i- it's, um, similar to the adjacent property, as you mentioned, Bailey. Um, and we'll see if anybody, uh, has any concerns momentarily. So, that's pretty much all I have. Any other questions or concerns of members of the board or Katie or Anthony?
No.
No. All right, um, if not, I would ask if there's anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Wendy and Stephen Kimbor. This is for property located at twenty-one Ocre Lane in Southampton. Uh, if you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
Okay, if not, Brian had had lean on the application, I'll make the motion on his behalf. Um, I'll lead the lead with him, I guess. Um, so, uh, I would move out that we close the application, uh, for, uh, except for written submissions. The deadline for written submissions is end of business on October twenty-second and, uh, we will have a decision at our November fourth meeting.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Um, Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Jerbo Tsai, thanks so much, Bailey, have a good rest of your night.
You too.
Okay, item six on the agenda is Huckleberry Lane East LLC. Eleven Huckleberry Lane East in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash two thirty-one, dash one, dash twenty-one. Applicant request relief for the following provisions of the town code for a proposed swimming pool. One, three thirty dash eleven, residential, uh, residential district stable with dimensional regulations for an accessory front yard setback of five feet where seventy feet is required. And three thirty dash seventy-six D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow a swimming pool to be located within the required front yard and a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction, we have a Jet Marino.
Evening, Jet, you just have to unmute yourself. There you go. Yep, uh, doing okay, I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I'm not an attorney, so I'll swear.
No problem, all right, if you can just, uh, state your name and address, please.
My name is Jet Marino, my address is one-six-one Hill Station Road, Southampton, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, you can tell us about the application.
So, um, this application is for construction of a new swimming pool and, um, one family dwelling house. Um, I just, eleven Huckleberry Lane East in Hampton Bay. Uh, so if you're looking at the survey, uh, and the proposed pool, um, we are requesting for a five-foot setback relief for the variance where, um, seventy feet is required. Um, if you look at the survey, you can see that this is a flag lot and, um, being one, the previous owner had requested that, uh, west side of the property be, uh, classified as a front yard, uh, because he had built a pool on the east side of the property. Uh, we are requesting this relief because currently, uh, we have the septic, the new IA systems, uh, septic system installed on the east side of the property and the only logical place for a pool is where we have the proposed survey, which is on the west side.
Well, I have to say, um, pool, a pool, um, does create some noise and having it five feet from a property line is pretty close, if you ask me.
The.
Great.
The, the five feet, uh, the adjoining lot where the five feet setback were requiring. The five feet, the adjoining lot where the five feet setback were requiring is actually part of the, I'm not sure which property is that, but it's actually an empty lot. It's not really, there's no, it's not improved. There's no house there.
Is there a reason why?
Doesn't mean that it wouldn't be, yeah.
Right. Is there a reason why the pool is set back that far? Can it move closer to the, to the house, to the deck?
We could potentially move it closer. We were just looking to have kind of that walkway in between the deck and the pool.
The application itself seemed to suggest it was a 10-foot setback.
It did. You're right.
And, and yet on the description, it's five feet. So what are we talking, we're talking about five feet, but was it advertised as 10 feet?
No, it was always advertised as five. I think I made a typo one for that in the application. I thought we had cleared this out with Candace, but I think that that was the only thing. It was just a typo in the application.
Okay.
It was, the neighbors were noticed with the fact that it was five feet.
Five feet.
Yeah.
When I look at, when I look at the survey, I, I think you could move it. And there's no reason. You may like the number, but that number could be changed. That's my.
I agree with Helen. I think it's a little tight to the
Very tight.
sideline when, when there's room to move it over. Either closer to the house or shift the house further and move the pool over.
Okay, I don't think that's going to be a problem. We can move it to 10 feet, right?
We need a new survey with how you, with what exactly you plan to do and then we can look at it. I mean, that's my.
Katie, if there wasn't a front yard, would, would 10 feet be conforming if that was a rear yard?
If it was a rear yard, what's the zoning issue?
I'm messing, I'm looking.
R40.
Susan, did you see the property?
I did not.
I could have gone.
Flag lot, so it would have been very hard for me to see the back. But I did not. I did not see it. Can I also ask, there's a
Twenty.
Maybe 20? Okay.
Oh, so the rear would be 20, Katie?
No, it was the sides. Side or rear would be 20 and an R40.
Then we do 20 feet, Jet. We'll do 20 feet.
20 feet?
Yep.
Okay. So what would I need to do? Do I need to submit a new survey with a
Yeah, just the survey would have to be revised, moving the pool over and having that new measurement, 20 feet instead of five feet. From the property line at the west.
Okay.
And I don't know whether by doing that, you're also going to need to make any changes to anything else that's, let me just take a look. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure whether you can move it to 20 feet because of the location of the wood deck. So that's something you need to go over with your survey.
Or shrink the size of the pool maybe.
That's the other option. Make it a smaller.
Or the deck?
Yeah, yeah. Or the deck, well. Is the deck proposed or is it already, already there?
Oh, the deck is existing.
That's what I thought. So it's going to cost them money to, you know, move, move the deck or cut off part of the deck. On the other hand, the pool is proposed. So I mean, ideally I would, speaking for myself, and you can hear from members of the board, if we want to move. Ideally, it would be great to put 20 feet. But if it can't be 20 feet because of the location of existing structures, then the question is, well, we would want to move this far over as you can. So if it's not 20, if it's 15, you know, the maximum amount that we can get it away from that western property line.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll get with my surveyor and we'll see how far we can push it. Hopefully we can do 20 and if not, then we'll just come back with whatever is the furthest we can do.
Okay, okay. So just a question now, members of the board, do we want Jet to come back?
Yes, I mean, I do.
Okay, okay. All right, so we just keep the public hearing open. And we do have room on our agenda for, at the next meeting, but anyway, but before we do any of that, I want to ask, are there any other questions? Anybody has?
Um.
Susan, you muted yourself. You're muted.
I'm sorry. I do have a question. On the survey, and this is considered the front yard, there is a six-foot stockade fence. Is that on your property or on the neighbor's property?
That's on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
And it may be in their side rear, rear yard, so.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm just was asking in terms of our applicant.
Of course, yeah.
All right, that was it.
Yep. Okay.
There's, there's also, one of the building department comments was that there's a pending application to add a second story addition above the attached garage. It doesn't show on our survey, so our, I mean, our, our survey should be consistent with what's happening on the property.
Yeah, all of the other open permits, they've already been built and we already had our final inspection, so you are correct. There is a second story on top of the garage. And we will show that on the updated survey. The surveyor missed that, I guess, when we're doing the proposed pool.
Yeah, me, so is there, is there no longer a hot tub on the wood deck too?
There is no longer a hot tub.
Okay, so the survey definitely needed to be revised anyway. Yeah, yeah, because it has to be, be what's currently there.
Are you, are you guys, there is no hot tub in the survey right now.
No, there's no hot tub.
Yeah, so the revisions would be the proposed pool with setback of possibly 20 feet. And then just to also show that there is a second story on top of the garage.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this, on Zoom this evening in connection with the application of Huckleberry Lane East LLC? This is for property located at 11 Huckleberry Lane East in Hampton Bays. If you're waiting to be heard, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
I have one.
You have one, okay.
Alex.
Hi, so I just, I'm trying to knock on number 21 store, oh, I forgot, we don't know the answer.
Alex, Alexis, I just have to swear, swear you in and also we can't see you. We can hear you, but we can't see you. There we go, there we go. So I just have to, unless you're an attorney, I just have to swear you in.
I'm not an attorney.
Not attorney, okay. If you can just state your name and address, please.
Alexis Godley, Ten Ridge Lane, Hampton Bays, New York, 1194 cents.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can tell us your comments.
Hi, I am just joining. I live on the adjoining property just to the north. And I have no objection to the pool.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
That's pretty much what you wanted to tell us?
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
All right. Have a good rest of your night. Okay, anybody else from the public who is waiting to be heard? Okay. Charlie, no other hands?
No other hands.
Okay, all right. If not, Susan, then this is yours.
I move that we keep the public hearing open and that we adjourn this to the October 21st meeting.
Same.
Okay, Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Tunnell.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Jervon Tsai, adjourn until October 21st. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone's speaking? We ready?
I think we're ready.
All right. Item seven on the agenda is Philip Patel Savage Coward to Hillam. I did my best. 147 Edgemere Drive in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-31-133.2. Applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed two-story addition to the existing dwelling, a non-conforming lot. One, 330-115C continuance for a principal total side yard setback of 25, 24.9 feet where 40.5 feet is existing. And two, 330-84D pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of 1,303.62 cubic feet. 663.5 proposed on the east side and 640.12 existing on the west side and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening. Good evening, board. My name is Louis Puccio.
And Louis, I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
Okay.
Can you just, you stated your name, if you state your address.
One Country Lane, Hampton Bays, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you tell us about the application?
Sure.
Excuse me, what, what did you say your name was?
My name is Louis Puccio. I am an associate of the applicant Mark A. Schiffrt, P. Mark is not available due to a medical emergency this evening, but we would like to proceed with the hearing tonight.
And I hope Mark feels better.
Yes. Okay. So we are looking for relief of the side yard setback from the southwest property line from 20 feet to 15 feet. Let me see if I can share the screen here. So as we can see here, this red dotted line is an accessory setback and it's also a principal setback. You can see that right there. And as it exists, it's a 20-foot setback and we were looking for relief to 15 feet as well as the relief for the, the pyramid law from the southwest property line. Majority of this property is covered by a natural pond in front of the existing residence. And the rear of the parcel is also a bayfront beach. This only leaves a portion of the lot, which is, you know, 12,500 square feet as buildable area. This leaves no direction for Mr. Patel to expand his residence in any other direction other than southwest. Other houses in the zoning district are also waterfront, that are also waterfront are typically larger in size and in bedroom count. The existing residence is a three-bedroom residence. We are looking to increase the bedroom count by only one to four bedrooms. Mark A. Schiffrt, P, spoke to the neighbor to the west, 145 Edgemere, and has submitted a signed letter from the neighbor, Mr. Woods, stating he has no objection to the approval of the relief of the side yard setback from 15 to 20, from 20 to 15 feet. We have designed the addition to have no windows on the wall parallel to the neighbor's property, so this window right here. This wall. We also took into consideration that the residence is of a certain architectural design and made sure that the addition would match the existing residence design.
Okay, we did this. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just was going to say, what's the total pyramid encroachment? We have like plus and, plus and minuses?
Um, it's approximately.
No, what, what exactly is it?
I have right here, the, the area is 16.84 and then the volume is 663.5 cubic feet.
On the east side, what about on the west side?
The west side, this is an existing encroachment of 640 cubic feet.
640 points, okay.
Yeah, so, so basically the, the 663.5 is the new, the additional pyramid relief that's being requested, although, you know, in the, because, well, we advertised for the whole thing, but part of it already exists.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Have you guys gone to the conservation board yet?
Uh, no, we have not.
You're going to have to.
You're going to have to, and we may not be able to do, act on the application until there is at least an application in. But in the meantime, there were comments from the building department that I just wanted to read to you. Uh, Louis, just so you're aware of them. Maybe you're aware of them already, I'm not sure. Anyway, so this is what we got from Marjorie Riley, building inspector. In order to confirm compliance, the plans slash elevations taken from all cardinal points, north sea, north, south, east and west, and the survey shall be revised in accordance with the chief building inspector's method of determining both the overall height of a building or structure and the method of delineating the sky plane pyramid height for each line, each lot line. Two, remove any reference to R15 zone from the site plan. And three, although not, not part of this application, the trellises were built without the benefit of the building permit and we need to be legalized. So I think you would need to have a conversation with Marjorie about the pyramid. That the way in which it's determined and the trellises, if they are, were built without permits. They either need to be conforming or, or that is moved to a conforming location or removed. So, you know, that's information that is important to us to be aware of. And I'm not sure whether you're familiar with that, with the trellises on the property. Do you have any, Louis, do you have any information about the trellises on the property?
Uh, I, not at the moment. I'm aware of them, but I, I was not aware that they were not, you know, permitted.
Yep.
And with regard to the trellises, is it just that she needs to have a building permit submitted or it doesn't seem like it's a variance request?
We don't know. We don't know.
Okay.
So that's why, you know, it needs to be looked into. And, you know, they're not, the applicant hasn't asked for relief for the trellises, but the applicant, just like with the other application, could, you know, decide to add that as part of the relief that's being requested. We don't know whether a variance would be necessary. We don't know what the measurement is. The survey itself, I don't know whether, I don't go back to the survey to see whether it shows the trellises.
Yeah, I don't see it. I'm there, you know.
Yeah, yeah. But in any case, Louis, we need you to look into this. If it turns out that you want to apply for variance relief for the trellises, I think the neighbors would need to be noticed. If that's what you'd be looking to do. But in any case, and that's just me speaking for myself. But I would start out by talking to Marjorie about that and the issue with the pyramid calculation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Are, excuse me, are the trellises, the trellises on the rear of the house between the house and the, the new pool? Is that, is that the trellises that are being?
I, I'm not sure. They could be, because there is a, there's an array of trellises here and then there's a slight overhang here.
And if you don't need relief from, you know, for variance, we would just need you to get a building permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from members of the board or Katie or Anthony? Is there anyone from the public who's, wait, I'm sorry? Okay, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening on Zoom in connection with the application of Patel? And Dylan, this is for property located at 147 Edgemere Drive in North Sea. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom.
I have someone.
Let us know.
I have someone.
Okay.
Lisa.
Louis, can you stop sharing your screen so we can see what else is coming in?
Uh, yes, I apologize.
That's okay.
No worries.
We'd like to see you in the survey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I see, I see Lisa is there, but we can't, Lisa, we can't see you, we can't hear you. So we need you to unmute and start video. There we are. Okay, hello. Still need you to unmute. There we go. Okay. All right. Lisa, just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
My name's Carol, and this is Heather.
Okay. Carol, are you gonna be the one who's gonna talk to us? Okay, no problem. So, so are you gonna state your full name and your address for the record?
Carol O'Connor, one thirty-eight Edgemere Drive, Southampton.
And, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. We're having a little trouble hearing you. Okay, I think we can hear you now. Okay, if you'd tell us, would you like to tell us about the application?
Okay, you answered, one of my questions was about the conservation board, and that they will have to get a permit, apply for that before starting building. Is that correct?
I think so. I mean, when I, when I looked up the parcel, it's flagged on wetlands, so, you know, normally, if, if the parcel needs wetlands permit, you know, we, we, we make sure they go to the conservation board first to see if the conservation board wants to reconfigure the plan. So we, we wait for, you know, conditional resolution of approval, or a, you know, non-jurisdiction, you know, letter.
Yeah, and the reason we do that is because it may be the conservation board may say, we want the structure, you know, that the structures, the proposed structures move to a different location. You know, who knows? It can change the whole application.
My other question is about the wetlands. It's a very fragile area. The driveway is surrounded both by a pond on either side. And I'm not sure the length of the back of the house where they want to do the building, but it is very close to the pond. Which...
Yeah, which is exactly why the conservation board needs to take a look at it.
And the other houses that he mentioned about them being large houses around this house, they don't have wetlands right behind them.
Right, right. And this is an unusual lot, unusually challenging in terms of what's going on.
Okay, that was my one.
Not a doubt, yeah. Okay. Anything else you wanted to tell us? Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Patel and Dylan for one forty-seven Edgemere Drive in North Sea?
No other hands.
No other hands. Okay. If not, there's another one, that's Brian. So, we're gonna have to leave this one open, and we're gonna need, Louis, you're gonna need to make an application to the conservation board. How long do you think that's gonna take?
Now I see a hand.
Now you see a hand.
Sorry, John. Yes.
Okay. All right. So, waiting to, to see John.
The John Serkin, he's our next application.
Okay, so, never mind.
Okay, he's not, okay. All right, so getting back to what I was saying, so, so, so Louis, yeah, so we need, need you to make an application to the conservation board. The question is how long that, that will take for you to be able to submit that. And I'm not sure, not just submitting it really, we want to, we want to get feedback from the conservation board on this application before we act. But at, at a minimum, we would wanna be adjourning it until you're, you're able to put an application in.
Right.
And I know, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, you may not know how long that's gonna take.
I'd say, you know, it could be between, you know, three weeks to six weeks, in that time range.
Yeah.
You know, to get feedback.
Reasonable.
We could definitely, you know, get a submission within two to three weeks, and then to get some feedback, it would be a little bit longer.
Yeah, okay. So we're talking about, sounds like we, you wouldn't be coming back for at least the next two meetings. Just taking a look at dates. We could try to have you back on November eighteenth, in which case, maybe you would have it in, maybe you wouldn't. If it turns out that you don't have it in, just let Candace know, and we'll just adjourn it further.
Okay, so November eighteenth?
I'm, I'm thinking November eighteen.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I would move that...
Is there a motion, Adam?
Right, right now, I'm making a motion. I would move to adjourn the application of Patel and Dylan for all purposes until our November eighteenth meeting.
Taking.
Mr. Toddhill.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Sheriff O'Toole. Thanks so much for being, being here. I'll have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, re-advertised applications. Eight, Athena Mustakis. Ten Oak Road, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash five dash five dash sixty-four. Applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed two-story dwelling and a non-conforming lot. One, three thirty dash one fifteen C continuance for a proposed principal front yard setback on the north side of the property, New York Avenue of ten point four feet, where fourteen point seven feet is pre-existing. Two, three thirty dash eleven, Residence District Table Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback on the west side of the property, Oak Road, of twenty-seven point seven feet, where thirty feet is required to the dwelling. Two, a principal setback on the east side of the property, New York Avenue of nineteen point eight feet, where thirty feet is required, required to the dwelling. Excuse me, I just lost my space. Three, a principal front yard setback on the east side of the property, New York Avenue of seventeen point seven feet, where thirty feet is required to the porch. And four, proposed total lot coverage of twenty-five point one percent. Three, three thirty dash eighty-three B, one yards for unroof balcony that projects more than eight feet into the principal front yard setback. And four, three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of five thousand four hundred and eight cubic feet, and any other relief necessary.
What has jurisdiction?
Okay.
Keith, I just clarify something, Keith. I think you, you said lot coverage of twenty-five percent. And this, this area variance says lot coverage of twenty-seven point two percent. I just don't know which, which it is.
Well, I'm reading off the agenda.
Okay, well, we can let, we'll swear, we'll swear John in. And John, do you know if Athena's coming?
She should be here. Athena, raise your hand if you could hear me.
Okay, so let's swear John in and look for Athena.
No problem. John, unless you're an attorney, just need you to state your name and address for the record.
John Serkin, thirty-three Flying Point Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can tell us about the application.
Sure. So, as you probably all recall, this is, was re-advertised, because the last time we heard this, we didn't have lot, the lot coverage issue was not noticed properly. To get to that first point, the lot coverage we are requesting is twenty-five point one percent. The twenty-seven percent is from a previous older version of the survey, and the surveyor miscalculated. So twenty-five point one is the correct number. And, and just in the way of kind of a typographical errors, the variance from Oak Road is, that we're asking for is twenty-seven point five. I believe it's written as twenty-seven point seven.
Yeah, I see.
Right. So as you, I'm sure, recall, this is a lot that has three front yards. And we're asking for a, you know, various dimensional setbacks, because we were burdened with the three front yards. At the last hearing, I think the board did not have any great issues with that. We were more concerned with the pyramid and the potential lot coverage issues. At the suggestion of Brian, who is not here tonight, we hip the roof, and we reduced our pyramid by quite a lot. So last time we were here, we were looking for some seven thousand plus cubic feet. Now we're down to five thousand four hundred and six cubic feet, which I think for this area in Pine Neck is not untypical. I know myself, I've done one down the road. We did about forty-six hundred cubic feet in pyramid relief, and I'm sure there are others. I think there's some on Pine Neck. As to the lot coverage, we are asking for twenty-five point one. We, we are demolishing the garage. The previous application before you showed the garage remaining, that garage is now removed. The current coverage right now, including the current house and the garage, is twenty-one percent. So we're asking for another four point one percent in lot coverage compared to what is currently there.
So as I mentioned in the last public hearing, this area, Pine Neck, is, consists of a lot of very small lots that originally were often summer, you know, fungals, and people are now making them their full-time residences, and it is really difficult for them to literally do anything with their property without getting variance relief.
Right, this house is... Adam, Adam, the agenda says that he's, needs fifty-four oh eight in cubic feet, and he just said fifty-four oh six or something. What's the number?
Fifty-four oh eight. You're right, Keith. If I, if I misspoke, I apologize.
Well, that's all right. I just wanna make sure, you know.
Yeah, yeah. We have to go, but pyramid's got, anyway, there's the actual measurement. Okay. But I do recall last time having a discussion about the lot coverage, so it looks like that has been cleared up. I guess the other question is, and I do recall mentioning this at the last public hearing about, you know, usually we grant, you know, lot coverage, you know, for, and I've mentioned this before, for tennis courts as opposed to pools. But that's, you know, the reality is, we, we do pretty routinely grant lot coverage relief to twenty-five, in the range of twenty-five, twenty-six.
How big is the house?
Plus or minus two thousand square feet.
Total?
So...
Is that the footprint or what?
No, no, no. It's about, it's right on the survey there, which I'm having trouble reading, because my computer is not. You see the footprint? I, I, again, my computer just blanked its screen, but it's right there in the middle of the survey. That shows the footprint, and it's a two-story house. It says proposed. One thousand one hundred thirty-three square feet, so it's, it's twenty-two hundred, the whole house.
Thank you, thank you.
Thousand one hundred thirteen, so it's twice that. It's two, two four...
Yes.
Yeah, so two thousand two hundred and twenty-six.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I think as properties go in this neighborhood, it's a pretty big lot.
Yeah, the three front yards are certainly a restriction.
Yeah, and, and we are pushed back towards the rear of New York Avenue for, for that septic, so, so we are holding the thirty feet from Oak Road, only really because of that septic. We need, we couldn't get it. Otherwise, we would split it and place it more centered, but, but we need that thirty feet from Oak Road to make the septic fit.
Yeah, so I would imagine that a lot of the relief is, is being driven by the three front yards.
Oh, yeah, every, every dimensional relief is being driven by that, you know, and then that, that's basically, yes.
Yeah.
I think you did a good job between last meeting and now, making a lot of big reductions. So, it looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take your efforts. Okay. Any other questions, members of the board, or Katie or Anthony?
Nope.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening on Zoom in connection with the application of Mustakis? This is for property located at ten Oak Road in New York. If you're waiting to be heard, this would, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands. Okay, if not, mic is yours.
Okay, we will keep this open for any written submissions, I think. Do, is, are these documents all correct, or we were talking about different numbers in different places? Are we accepting these documents as representative of this, of this variance request? Nothing needs to be corrected or changed, yeah? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I don't want to interrupt you. There were, all the lot coverage is twenty-five point one. Those were all submitted to Candace a week or so ago. So those are in, if not in your hands, they're in your, in the building somewhere.
Yeah, we got a revised application or other revised documents. So obviously, we have to make sure that we cover everything, but at this point, we may as well, it's open for written submissions anyway, so it, it's gonna be, so it's, it's an issue, I guess we'll let you know.
Okay, yeah, please make, please make sure with Candace, she's out this week, so please make sure that she has all the correct facts and figures on the correct documents. And we will leave it open. You have until October twenty-second to make sure of that, and then we will render a decision on November fourth.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Toddhill.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Sheriff O'Toole. Thank you for your comments this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you. Good night. Good night, Board. Thank you.
Ten ninety agenda is Richard Doyle, sixty-two Waters Edge Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash sixty-two dash one dash fifty-one. Applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for a proposed swimming pool. Three thirty dash eleven Residence District Stable Dimensional Regulations for an accessory front yard setback of twenty feet from the easterly property line, North Road, where seventy feet is required. And two, three thirty dash seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required front yard for the principal building. Two, for a proposed addition on the south side of the dwelling. A principal front yard setback of fifty feet, plus or minus from easterly property line, North Road, where sixty feet is required. And two, three thirty dash one fifteen C continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of six point five feet, where sixteen point seven feet is existing. And a principal total side yard setback of twenty-three point two feet, where thirty-six point five feet is existing. And three, three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of five hundred and forty-five point two cubic feet. And three, for a proposed shed attached to the north side of the dwelling. Three thirty dash eleven for an accessory side yard setback of eleven point one feet, where twenty feet is required. And three thirty dash seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow the shed to be located within the minimum total side yard for the principal building and a non-conforming lot. In addition, to clarify the records, relief is required from town code three thirty dash eleven for a principal front yard setback of fifty point four feet from the westerly property line, Waters Edge Road, where fifty-one feet was permitted, and any other relief necessary.
What has jurisdiction?
I can swear either or both of you, and whoever would like to speak. If you want to both speak, I'll swear you both in. Unless you're an attorney.
Yeah, it's okay. We're not attorneys.
Okay, all right. So, okay, so if you state your name and address, please.
Richard Doyle, sixty-two Waters Edge Road.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You can tell us about the application.
Yes, with our growing family, we're trying to do a addition on the south side of our house, which would be a one-car garage and a bathroom. And I know it seems like it's relatively close to the side yard. It's asking for seven feet, but when I looked at the whole neighborhood, it, it kind of matches the character, because there's about, there's about fourteen properties that are, that had the two front yards in the cove, and seven of them are all under six feet off the side. So that's kind of what I, my, you know, partial, I don't know, meaning to all this. I, I thought there was reasoning here that we possibly do that. I can share my screen to show you.
Sure, sure.
I guess it's not working here.
Well, you keep trying. We'll give you a minute.
Yeah, it's sharing. It's just you got the agenda up there too, so maybe close that screen.
Okay.
Because we see the aerial, we see all the, you know, yeah, yeah, I think you just have two reasons.
Do you see this, the house, or no? None of this?
We see like aerials with G, it looks like you have GIS open.
Okay, I mean, I have a, I have a photo here. I don't know if you can see that now.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right, so these are the properties that I labeled. Mine is highlighted over here and um you know, all these properties, you know, I'm asking for seven feet, but uh you know, number thirty-six is four feet, number forty is four point four feet. And uh number forty-two was six point seven feet, forty-six was, I think, five point nine.
All with variances?
Yeah, most of them all have variances, I think. Uh uh Candace and I have pulled them all together, and I think all but one had had uh no variance required.
Okay.
Yeah, number number forty-eight had three point three feet off the side. I mean, um.
Yeah.
And all these guys we're very close with, we're all, we've spoken to the neighbors, we're all, you know, we're all a team. And um but yeah, that was, that's what we're trying to do. And we're also trying to add a pool. And uh that's that.
Um, so you have an issue being that you have two front yards.
Yes.
That make things easy. Um. And I understand you have really very few options in terms of which way to go. Um, so which is which is, you know, part of this. Um.
Yeah, we have three young children and it's getting tight.
Yeah.
You know, we were, we both grew up out here.
Our families.
Our families from out here. My family is a farming family for like three generations and yeah, we love it out here. We want to make it work.
We don't want to move out of here.
No.
Okay, um have you been in touch with the neighbor uh to the south?
Yes, talking today, yes.
And uh so so the neighbor to the south is okay with the application?
Yes, yes, and he knows what we're asking to do, you know.
I mean, ge- generally, I will say I understand that you properties in the vicinity are very close to property lines, that that is the houses or accessory structure close to property lines. Now, the purpose of setbacks is so that people can use their property without properties without necessarily staring at each other. Um, so it is pretty close. Um, but you know, I understand that sometimes uh you have very few options. Um, I mean, I would.
It's not like we're the only one on the block trying to do it. I think everybody has done it, and we're all friends and it kind of worked out.
Okay.
It seems like character with the neighbor.
Character.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, um, but there's a lot of relief, so but but then again, you're also burdened by two front yards, so that that you drive some of the relief. Okay, pyramid relief is pretty modest. I guess, I don't know if there's multiples. There's one set of pyramid relief to five, five forty-five point two cubic feet. I think that is really related to, let's see which structure it is.
Yeah, the addition of the garage.
Addition, yeah, okay, okay, all right, all right.
It's all, so a bathroom in there too. We we only have two bathrooms. We're trying to add that third bathroom.
Yeah.
And we'll do the whole new septic program, obviously, you know, the whole the whole brand new septic.
The I A program, yeah.
We're ve- we're very close to the water.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, those lots are are tight and restrictive, so uh this 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 makes sense to me, but there is a a whole a whole number of comments on the uh but I'm sorry, Susan, I think I cut you off. Were you going to say something?
I I was going to ask about the shed and the location of the shed.
Yes. We have this, we have the shed on the uh north side of the property.
Right, right.
We have it about eleven feet off the um off the border, off of.
And that's the only location for the shed that?
Yeah, you know what, and also, we talked to the neighbor and and their shed's literally two feet off the side, so we talked about this. We're like, you know, let's keep our sheds here, and that's kind of how it worked out.
So it's comparable on the other side of the property line.
Yes, yes, perfect.
But do you do you need a variance for the shed? I I didn't see that.
Yeah.
I didn't.
I see, yeah, yeah, I see.
Number three.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, so what kind of uh shape does this shed in?
Oh, it's a nice uh prefab shed. It's small. It's uh it's uh eight by six.
I know, I'm surprised.
By six, it says.
Is it?
Yeah, the reason I ask is because it has to withstand a major storm, so we're going to need something in writing. Maybe you've already made something, but something in writing about the condition of the shed that it can withstand, you know, a storm, because otherwise we we can't grant variance relief for it.
Yeah, it's a it's a frame structure on a slab, but it's not going.
Okay, that is good.
It's listed on Ray. Barely over anything, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, I presume you can't, because it's on a slab, it would be cost prohibitive to move it to a conforming location?
Yeah, it would, it would.
How much should you think it would cost?
I think it would cost, I got a few friends in the concrete business, I don't know.
Well, we might want to get it as, have it in the file. And I'm not suggesting that because we want you to move the shed.
Yeah.
That I'm suggesting it so that you we can have in the file what the financial cost would be if we deny the relief in the shed.
Got you, got you.
Okay, so I would say an estimate would be a good idea.
Okay.
Um, let's see, um but besides that, also at the end, we're clarifying the records. Uh having to do with the principal front yard setback of fifty point four feet. Fifty fifty point four feet where fifty-one was permitted. This looks like maybe way back when there was a relief that was needed that was not caught. Are you familiar with what I'm saying?
Yeah, our our house is from the, I think, the late sixties, and I think the owner had had a um he enclosed the structure, and I I don't think he did the paperwork correctly. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but he did do an addition from the original structure.
I see, yeah, so the measurements there are fifty point four feet and so basically um a tiny amount of relief for the existing dwelling that probably way back when would have needed that relief.
Yeah, we, yeah, and that's next that we're not going any further, you know, in that direction anyway.
It's, okay. All right. So I'm not sure if uh the rest of the board is okay with uh the relief that's being requested?
Um, Richard, did you, did you see all of the notes from the building department about the surveys and everything? Did you get all those revisions?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I believe so. Yes, I did, I think.
Yeah, so they were from Marjorie Riley, building inspector, and we just want to make sure that Marjorie is satisfied with what is in the file, um what you submitted.
Yeah, she she, yeah, she gave us a denial letter, I think. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yes, yes, and then I wondered if you, and I wondered if you, so you've already addressed them, submitted revised surveys and everything?
Yes, oh, yeah, everything.
Perfect.
And you reconfigured the driveway?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments from members of the board or Katie or Anthony? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Doyle? Uh this is for property located at sixty-two Waters Edge Road in North Sea. Waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
You got anybody, Charlie?
All right, no hands.
No hands. All right, if not, I keep, it is yours.
All right, um, I will make a motion to um October twenty-two for any written submissions with a determination on eleven-four.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Chair of Tsai, thank you. Have a good rest of your evening.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, take care.
Bye-bye.
Yeah.
I am telling the agenda is Mia Rowe. Application twenty-one triple zero five four eight seventy-two Millstone Road in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash thirty-six dash one dash twenty point two six. The public hearing for this application was closed on August five, twenty twenty-one. But the record was left open for written submissions by August twenty twenty twenty-one. By letter dated September fifteen, twenty twenty-one, Timothy McCully states, as the attorney for the applicant, he has no objection to the board reopening the hearing for additional testimony. This application was reopened on September sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, as you guys remember, we asked uh we asked Tim McCully to come back and just uh, you know, answer a couple of the questions, and he did recently submit that supplemental affidavit that uh hopefully you guys got.
We did. Evening, Tim.
Good evening. For the record, Timothy S. McCully of Council of Arkansas, Sullivan, forty-one Meeting House Lane in Southampton. Um, I reviewed the hearings between, I know there was some some discrepancy that you found between Kiran's first hearing and the subsequent hearings that we had. I'm here to answer the questions. I I looked at the hearings. I I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, it was almost as if we had two different applications on.
Are you not confusing my application with her other application, are you?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, well, ask me the questions that are bothering you.
Well, I mean, what happened was that initially there was a discussion about uh that structures had gone up without permits, and then Kiran was going to get back to us about that, and then you came to the pub, the next public hearing, and you said, everything has, basically, everything has permits. Or at least most everything has permits.
Okay, let me, let me, let me go back to that. At the June third hearing, you and I think maybe Brian DeSessa raised questions about, there seems to be a lot of stuff on here on this property that was built without permits. And I, and I kind of threw Karen under the bus there because at the last minute I asked her to open the hearing. So she was without a lot of information, which I thought I cleared up at the August meeting. Because everything on this property, except for the shed and the little rubber mat that's in front of the the basketball court that's called uh it's called the sport court. What that is is, you know, those interlocking rubber kind of mats that you buy and so that they can bounce a basketball when they're playing with the hoop. Other than that, everything on this property, I believe, has a permit, except for that shed.
Okay, well, I'm not.
Would you like me to go, would you like me to go through the history again? I've given you the affidavits.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, that would be fine, but you know, the way in which it was advertised was relief for structures without permits, so I.
That's wrong. That was wrong. Because what happened here, let me just take you back so you'll understand. They got a permit for the pool. They got a permit for the patio, for the hot tub. Then when they were building the pool, they ran into a problem, so they had to go back and they got an amendment. Everything was built, everything was approved, right? Uh Dave Kanji signed off approved subject to a new survey, which admittedly, the contractor, and that's a whole another story, did not put in and finish. When they went in for a heating system for the house, that's when Marge Riley picked up the fact that the prior owner in two thousand and two built the house in the wrong place. So he had to get a variance. The this board gave him a variance for forty-two or forty-three feet and designated that as the rear yard, which made this area the front yard. Well, nobody picked up on that until Marge picked up on it when they went in for a heating system. That's what happened here. And then all of a sudden, she said, well, we don't have the authority to overrule the zoning code. You have to go to the zoning board, so here we are.
Okay, well, and 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 look, I appreciate what you're telling telling us, us, Tim, and it's consistent with what you told us at the last public hearing. Um, I really wanted to get on the record that the the uh to clarify that, you know, that that there was different test, that there was a different presentation the first time and the second time. And I understand that Kiran made nothing to believe what the application was doing you a favor and covering for you. But still, you know, we rely upon agents and attorneys and applicants themselves to give us information, um, uh, you know, you know, from an attorney or sworn as to what's going on, and uh I listened to both hearings and I was confused. And at the end of the second second hearing, I had asked, I know that I had asked for something in writing about the discrepancies, and we didn't really get anything in writing, so.
Yeah, you got two things in writing. First of all, you got a memo from me. Okay, which I want to touch upon before we close this.
Okay.
You got a memo from me, you got an affidavit from Norman Rowe, the applicant's husband. And then when I was told by Katie that you were still not satisfied, I went to the the architect or the the draftsman who did all the permits, and he explained what happened here. That the first contractor was supposed to file, but he started the work. When they found out he hadn't gotten the permits, they immediately called uh Keith Voice. He filed all of the permits. That's why they're stamped work done. It's not like they were building things and didn't didn't um apply for the permit.
Okay, well.
That's that's what happened here, but if you look at, if you look at the C of Os and you look at the permits, you'll find everything is in order, except for the shed. And I I'm going to file for the shed. The shed is stick-built, I understand, whether it's going to comply with the windboard a hundred and thirty mile an hour. And I don't know that it will, and if it doesn't, then it's got to go.
Okay, now, Tim, I I appreciate that, and I'm, you know, I I just really wanted to get on the record because it was you know, all of this, because there was nothing in the submissions that I could see uh talking about the different test testimony hearings versus yours, and so I just wanted to have at least.
Well, I was confused. I'm sorry. I couldn't, I looked at all the hearings and I didn't know what you were talking about, because what Kiran said that night, I believe, and of course, the testimony is what it is, but I believe that you were questioning her about these stuff on this property that didn't have permits, and she said, I'll get back to you.
That basically.
And then I got back to you on the August.
I understand. So basically, what happened was, I think the discussion was she would get back to us as to the status of of, you know, these uh structures that were built without permits, and then you came to the next hearing and said, there are no structures, essentially, almost no structures without permits. So that kind of uh was confusing. That that's all, and I just wanted the record to be clarified on that.
Okay, and then after the last hearing, there was some confusion about uh some of what the variances that were necessary, so I met with Marge Riley. I know she gave you an email saying the shed doesn't need any variances. Um, and so that I will address that with a building permit, and we'll see where that goes. I don't know if it's going to pass muster or not, but that's that's a whole another issue. But I did want to point out that I did give you the memo, and in that memo that I submitted in August, I have a a section in there saying what variances are necessary. Some of the advertising for this application is incorrect. For instance, on the southwest corner of the patio, they're saying thirty feet. Well, that's to the house. The pool is actually twenty point eight feet, and in the southwest and the southeast corner, it's twenty-one point seven. Now, the required, and they're saying that I'm in the required side yard. Well, a required side yard, I believe in the R forty district, is forty-five feet. And the minimum is twenty, so I'm meeting it on one side. I got a hundred and six on the other side. So I don't think I need that, but I pointed all of that out in my memo, so whoever's doing the decision, if you decide to grant any or all of this relief, please read that.
Okay, okay.
All right, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of discrepancies here, then, a lot of variances that were advertised for that we don't need.
Okay, well, and so we'll we'll figure out what what variances you do need versus the ones you don't need, and we'll consider, you know, all, you know, all of them that you do need. Um, but we're going to have to, you know, I guess, uh Katie, I don't know whether you want to talk to uh Marjorie about this.
Yeah.
But clarify.
Yeah.
And and talk to me if if you have any questions, just so, you know, we're here to do the right thing, so let's get it all done in the right way.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate your coming back. I just, for myself, I just thought that we just needed more testimony here.
No, I understand. No, I understand where you're coming from. That's okay. Let's get it right. That's what we want to do.
Yes, we're all looking to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions of members of the board, or Katie or Anthony?
I have a question. The last time we were talking about the retaining wall being over four feet.
Yes, but they're not. Okay. Well, let me tell you about the retaining wall.
Okay.
I brought up the retaining wall, or I asked Karen to bring it up, because if you look at the surveys, you can't tell that the park to the east of that wall is way down. This is a retaining wall and it was built under the old law. So it complies. And the building department asked the applicant to get a certification of that wall. That was done. It was submitted to Dave Kanji. He was happy with it. It was done by Steve Lemansky from Southampton Engineering and he certified that the wall was in compliance with the building code. That's why I only, I hadn't been to the property on June, when she came here on June 3. So I wanted to be sure. When I looked at the survey, I thought those walls were on the ground and up. And that's why I was questioning it. But when I went out to the site, it's a retaining wall and it's been there. And it can't come down. And it's there. His letter to Dave Kanji says they're approximately 18 inches to five feet.
Okay.
And they're in a front yard, so I'm allowed six feet in the front yard. Because this, because this is a flag law. This is a flag law.
I see. That's right. We had that discussion and it changed it all.
I wouldn't come here for a six-foot fence in a front yard under other conditions. I know better. I know better and I feel sorry for the previous applicant.
Well, we can't please everybody.
No, no, and I understand the board's position. Give it the one, you have to give it to everybody and then we'll be looking at a bunch of alleys.
Well, yeah.
I got it.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions to members of the board?
Is there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just my question is, who's on first?
I got it.
All right, all right. So is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening? Can I show you the application of Rowe? This is the property located at 872 Millstone Road in Bridgehampton. If you are waiting to be heard, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
Okay. So Katie, do we want to do this for 11:04?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I would move that we close the application of Rowe, except for written submissions. The deadline for written submissions is October 22. And I will have a decision ready at our November 4 meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Second.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Tunnell.
Hi.
Daley.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Have good rest of your night, Tim.
You too. Thank you very much.
I am 11 on the agenda is Falcon 422 LLC. 422 Scuttle Hole Road in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-81-222.1.
Good evening. Lisa Poyer within her post to enforce permits on behalf of the applicant.
No problem.
Can you just say it again?
Well, if I previously swore you in, I don't. You stated your name, so we're good. You're still sworn.
Yes, you did the last hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
This was a, this is a two-part application, so to speaks. The first part of the application dealt with a subdivision or re-subdivision of the property where it was previously two lots and due to a title ownership that was similar, it merged. And so the applicant had requested to have the property re-subdivided. And in order to do that, we needed to come before the board. And I believe at the last hearing that it was determined that it needed to go through secret review with the health department. And I believe Candace and Katie have taken care of that secret determination as far as determining lead agency and doing the process. So I don't know if that.
We'll do that tonight.
Yeah.
Great.
We have the secret determination ready to go.
Okay, thank you. And I just didn't know if there's any other questions that the board had regarding that part of the application. Okay, so the second part, okay, the second part of the application dealt with requesting a variance for the side and the rear yard from 30 feet that was typically required in the R80 zoning district, which is what we're now in. And we had requested relief to go to our 40 setback relief, not going for all of the zoning, but just for relief from 30 feet back down to 20 feet for a proposed swimming pool. And you have, I believe, the surveys that were originally submitted showing that location. I believe at the original hearing, there was discussions regarding just showing some additional details around the pool. And I'm going to share the screen here. And this was the survey that was prepared just recently. We can, I believe it was submitted today to Candace. I can follow up with additional copies for the board. And it just shows that the proposed pool in its location with the 20 feet from the rear yard and 20 feet from the side yard request, in order to locate it in a location where it makes sense with a proposed patio around the pool, you want some, you know, chaise lounges, some entertaining area, that it shows that there is a reasonable distance between the house and the patio to allow for some chairs. And that's part of the reason why the applicant had requested it in its current location. In addition, the last survey did not show the doors that are coming out of the new proposed area of the house, which there is a building permit that was issued for, and the stairs that are leading down to the lawn area that the applicant is proposing. So the applicant would like to still request the 20-foot side and rear yard setback relief, which had the lots not been automatically merged by the ownership, would have been the standard zoning that was previously allowed in the R40 setbacks.
Okay, so previously we had suggested that the proposed pool be moved further away and you'd like to leave it where it is.
If the, right, if the board would grant that.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, I'm not sure where other board members are on this. Have we heard? Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, if it was in a conforming location, had this been remaining the R40, then I don't have a problem with the 20-foot setbacks.
Neither do I. I have no problem.
But these lots are now not R40s. They're R80s, right?
Correct.
Well, they're inadvertently, I think they were inadvertently merged because of the one deed situation. So they're just trying to go back to what they had, I believe.
That I get, but, okay.
But it's true, Susan, that they're getting, based on the variance relief, it's as if they were R40, but they're not.
We're not asking for R40 for everything. We are just requesting it for just the proposed pool.
Yes. So.
But nothing short, nothing, nothing more than the R40.
Correct.
Setback request, correct? Okay.
Correct.
And the fact that.
I'm okay with it.
Can I just?
No, I'm sorry. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, but I have a question. So if you subdivide this property, does it continue to have an R80 designation?
Yes, it will.
Or does it revert back to an R40?
No, it will not. It will stay at the R80 setbacks.
Okay.
So that's why if.
That's why we need variance, obviously.
Correct.
Okay.
I always, you don't have a problem, Kate?
I don't have a problem.
Better problem, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that the additional structures being shown on the survey just help us better understand what the applicant is trying to do. Okay, Susan?
Do we have an answer in terms of the accessory building? Was also raised by the building department.
Yes, we had clarified that at the previous hearing where we submitted some calculations for the existing and the proposed addition in the residence and the existing square footage in the one-story accessory structure. And it shows that the accessory structure is an accessory structure. It's less than 25% of the total area of the main residence.
Okay, because looking at the survey, it looks like.
You don't get it, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Maybe, well, and part of that is because, I mean, actually, the primary residence is two stories, the accessory structure is one story, so.
Correct.
Just looking at the dimensions of it, it looks like more than 25%.
What are those numbers? Because I don't have that written sub in front of me.
The main house is 3,304 square feet and the accessory building is 810 square feet. So it is 24.5% of the main residence. And that information was submitted with the original application.
Okay.
I can submit additional copies if you would like.
No, if we have it, you know, if we have it.
Yep.
You don't need to submit anymore.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments off members of the board, or Anthony? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Falcon 422 LLC? This is the property located at 422 Scuttle Hole Road in Watermill. If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand. Charlie?
Sorry, I'm having trouble with this button. There's no one else.
No problem. There's no one else?
No.
No one else? Okay, all right. So Katie, you want to do the secret resolution now?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. So we have a secret resolution in connection with the application of Falcon 422 LLC. Whereas the zoning board of appeals has received a submittal on behalf of Falcon 422 LLC for property located at 422 Scuttle Hole Road, Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map number 981-222.1. And whereas the submittal has been accompanied by an application to re-subdivide the premises for setback variances to construct a swimming pool and for an interpretation regarding an accessory structure as well as an environmental assessment form and other correspondence. And whereas after a review of the submittals, the zoning board of appeals found that this project is a type one action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and the Southampton Town Code, and coordinated review with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And whereas the applicant submitted part one of an environmental assessment form and planning staff has completed parts two and three of an environmental assessment form on behalf of the zoning board of appeals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Southampton Town ZVA assumes lead agency status with respect to the application of Falcon 422 LLC pursuant to six New York CRR, section 617.6B. And be it further resolved that after reviewing the documents and due to the nature of the proposed action and the existing site conditions, the zoning board of appeals, based on the recommendation of planning staff, finds that proposed activities would not result in any significant environmental impacts and hereby adopts a negative declaration for the application of Falcon 422 LLC. And be it resolved that this board directs that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Tunnell.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. So secret resolution is adopted. And now the question is, when are we going to be coming back? I'm presuming we're coming back. Not coming back? Nope. Okay, all right, then.
Unless you want more testimony, because the secret's done.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, well, if the secret's done and we don't have anything else, then Helen, you would make the motion to close the decision with written sub.
Decision, we'll have a decision on November 4.
Okay.
Second.
Written subs to October 22.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Tunnell.
Hi.
Ms. Curran.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for being here this evening, Lisa. Have good rest of your night.
Thank you. You too. Thanks.
Thanks.
Item 12 on the agenda, John and Victoria Petrello, 31 East Beach Drive, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map,
Good evening, Susanna.
Good evening. Hi, I think the homeowner, John Petrello, was also interested in being here this evening.
Okay.
If he's here, if you could let him in.
He's coming in.
Oh, good. So while he's coming in, I just wanted to make sure I dropped off since the last hearing revised surveys as well as revised pyramid drawings. So you should have those.
Yes, we got them.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right, the, I'll start with the survey. One of the outstanding issues at the previous hearing was the the setback to the air conditioner unit. And that, I think we had had plus or minus four feet. That's actually 5.3 feet. That's right here. That setback has been added. Can you see that?
Yep.
The other thing that was suggested, if you recall, the son of the adjacent neighbor to the north was present at the hearing and he had some concerns about whether or not the proposed house would stick out onto the beach and obstruct his family's view. As you may know, the view towards the west in this location is extremely important due to the amazing sunsets. That's one of the main reasons to be along this stretch of the bay here is the amazing sunsets. So we added the Caruso residence, which is the residence to the south of this property, to our survey. We gave our surveyor a copy of the survey for that property and they transposed that here. And you can see the C-word line of their house is here and the C-word limit of our proposed house is down here, which is about 42, 43 feet. Where the Caruso house is about 42 feet farther out towards the bay than the proposed Petrello house next door. So Mr. Petrello met with Mr. Mahoney and showed him this and they went over it. And I believe he showed it to his mother as well. And my understanding is that they're appeased and their concerns are taken care of there. I think they are, they understand that we're not going to be impacting their view of the bay or of the sunset. So that's, those are the changes to the survey. The revised pyramid drawings. Reduce this a little bit so you can see. The proposed pyramid variance requested has been reduced from 7,384 cubic feet down to, where'd it go? 5,000? 5,573 cubic feet. The architect used three. The architect used three methods to reduce the the pyramid. In the second floor, they reduced the ceiling height from eight foot six down to eight foot ceiling height on the second floor. He reduced the roof pitch from seven to 12 down to five to 12. And on the southern section of the building, they went from a gabled roof to a flat roof. That's this section here. So I think that's a pretty dramatic reduction. And another thing that the board had asked is what would the pyramid relief be if we were at the minimum required elevation under FEMA? We're required to be at least at elevation eight. And as you may recall, we're proposing first floor elevation of 10. We're not willing to decrease that. We are still proposing the house at elevation 10. I think that's the wise thing to do. But um just to see what that would look like, we had another drawing done. Sorry, my screen's kind of skipping around here. And that would look like this. This pyramid, if we were at the minimum allowable first floor elevation would be 3,369 cubic feet.
Right. And we don't, I I for one do not want you to go this low.
I I wouldn't recommend it. The existing house is seven something and it flooded. And so being an eight is not a good solution for a brand-new house that the Petrello family hopes will be there for generations. So.
Yeah, and plus plus FEMA may change change the heights and then if they do that, then all of a sudden this this applicant and many other property owners will have a lot of problems with their foundations.
Right, so I think we've made a very, very genuine and a very significant effort to reduce the amount of pyramid volume that we have requested. Again, it's dramatically less than what was approved across the street. And definitely within the range of other approvals that have been issued within within this neighborhood, within a few houses. At the last hearing, I went through all those numbers. Just about every house that's been redeveloped on this on this street has received a pyramid variance of at least 5,000 square feet.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm very familiar with it. And I appreciate the fact that so much effort was put into reducing the pyramid relief.
So I.
They did the right thing. I have no questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
It did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I said you did a good job.
Oh, thank you. I'll I'll pass that along to the architect and the homeowner. They were very reasonable.
So I know that the homeowner, I think, is is on the this uh, you want to tell us anything?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Um, I wasn't sure whether you were previously sworn in.
I was not.
You are not. Then I just had to swear you in. If you state your name and address, please.
John Petrello, 259 Cypress Drive, Staville, New Jersey.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You could uh let us know your comments. We're we're at this point very, very pleased about all the effort that went into the the changes uh made to the this uh proposed uh structure.
We'd just like to say that we appreciate the input that you gave us. And we're very satisfied with the drawings that we have now and we're looking forward to proceeding with the building. So thank you very much.
No problem. Wish you all the best.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, is there anyone from the public who's wait uh waiting to be heard uh on Zoom this evening in connection with the application of Petrello? This is the property located at 31 East Beach Drive in North Sea. If you're waiting to be heard, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
You got that button, Joey?
I see no hands.
No hands.
How about that?
Okay, if not, Mike, Mike, it is yours.
Okay, so we will um keep this, we'll close this public hearing, keeping it open for written submissions until October 22. And we'll have a decision on November the 4th.
Second.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Sure votes aye. Thank you all for being here. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 14, this is amendment to decisions. On September 16, 2021, this board by decision number D 021098 granted relief for a proposed two-story garage addition to an existing dwelling and relief to legalize the expansion of the slave patio on the south side of the swimming pool and on the south and east side of the hot tub. This decision is being amended to correct the script, new zero to wit the date of the survey. You got it, Adam?
Uh, hold on a second. Let's see. I do. Okay, my decision number D zero, amended decision for two rows court Southampton LLC Suffolk County Tax Map number 90010125.3. My decision number D 021098 dated September 16, 2021. This board granted variances to construct a two-story garage addition to an existing dwelling as well as to legalize the expansion of a slave patio. This decision, however, did not refer to the correct survey date. Therefore, decision number D 021098 is hereby amended to refer to the survey prepared by Ralph Hale of Meats and Bound Surveying, last revised August 9, 2021. All other provisions and conditions of decision number D 021098 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Sure votes aye.
You have a Herman decision there?
I do. I do.
You want to read it? Go ahead.
Sure. Okay, this is an amended decision for Harvey Herman. This is the property located at tax rep number 9012635. By decision number D 021099 dated September 16, 2021, this board granted variances to construct a proposed addition, artist studio and storage to an existing dwelling as well as to legalize both the sunroom and outdoor shower with various conditions. This decision, however, did not refer to the correct survey date. Therefore, decision D number D 021099 is hereby amended to refer to the survey prepared by Alphonse Pesci Jr., surveyor, last updated August 2, 2021. All other provisions and conditions of decision number D 021099 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Sure votes aye. Onto decisions. I guess I can start with the minor. Unless anybody else wants to go. Okay, I'll start with the minor. This is the minor variance for 1625 Noack Path LLC, property located at tax rep number 92216.8. This application is for property located at 1625 Noack Path Noack. Applicant requests a minor variance for lot coverage for a proposed dwelling with attached porches and decks. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant from Town Code Section 3311, Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for proposed lot coverage of 5.6% where a maximum of 5% is permitted for a proposed dwelling with attached porches and decks, as shown on the survey prepared by Gary Benz, surveyor, last revised September 27, 2021. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Sure votes aye. I can keep going unless anybody else wants to jump in.
Go.
All right, all right. I have decision on the application of Market Cathy Hannon. This is the property located at Suffolk County Tax Map number 943173.1. This application is for property located at 5 Woolies Drive in North Sea. Applicants requested variance to construct a porch addition to an existing dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant from Town Code 330, applicants from Town Code 33115C continuance for a principal rear yard setback of 45 feet where 46.6 feet is existence existing for a proposed porch addition to an existing dwelling, as shown on the survey prepared by John F. Berlsky, surveyor, dated November 14, 2017, last updated March 1, 2021, and the plans repaired by architect Sean F. Leonard, last revised September 1, 2021. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including removing slash relocating all fences in the right-of-way prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy or compliance.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Sure votes aye. Next, I have a decision in the matter of the application of Stephanie Davis. This is the property located at Suffolk County Tax Map number 90368240. This application is for property located at 78 South Phillips Avenue, Remsen Bird slash Spion. Applicant requests a single and separate determination as well as variances to convert an existing stoop into a covered porch and to construct a partially roofed over wood landing. The application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, in addition to this board finding that the subject lot is a single and separate 11,261 square foot lot that is entitled to relief pursuant to zoning code 33115D, this board additionally grants relief to the applicant from the provisions of zoning code 33115C continuance for one, a principal side yard setback of 13.7 feet where 15.9 feet is existing for the conversion of an existing stoop into a covered porch on the west side of the residence. And two, for a principal rear yard setback of 26 feet where 70 feet is required for a proposed partially roofed over wood landing on the south side of the property. The proposed covered porch and partially roofed over wood landing will have the location as shown on the survey of Rayner Marks Carrington by Floyd Carrington, surveyor, dated May 26, 2020, and the combined site plans of William Frederick Heine, architect, dated April 2, 2021, and the proposed additions and alterations of William Frederick Heine, architect, dated April 18, 2021, last revised August 18, 2021, which was submitted with the application and all incorporated herein. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and/or permits as the applicant was here to for acquired or may otherwise be necessary for final approval of the proposed covered porch and partially roofed over wood landing to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Sure votes aye. Next, Town of Southampton Housing Authority, this is the application for 86 Vale Avenue, Tax Suffolk County Tax Map number 90139233.2. This application is for property located at 86 Vale Avenue Riverside. Applicant requests a single and separate determination and a variance for lot coverage to construct a single-family dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board finds that the subject premises located at 86 Vale Avenue at tax rep number 90139233.2 is a single and separate 6,382 82 square foot lot and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to Town Code 33115C. Furthermore, this board grants relief to the applicant from Town Code 3311, Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a total lot coverage of 23.7 feet where a maximum of 20% is permitted for a proposed dwelling, as shown on the site plan and elevations prepared by Ryan Kesner, architect, last last dated October 1, 2021. This relief is granted contingent upon any such other conditions and permits applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Sure votes aye. I next have a determination on the application of Town of Southampton Housing Authority. This is for property located at 116 Vale Avenue. This is this is Suffolk County Tax Rep member 90132244. This application is.
Adam, is it 139?
139. Let me read it again. Thank you. We have 90139244. This application is for property located at 116 Vale Avenue Riverside. Applicant requests a single and separate determination and a rear yard variance to construct a single-family dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board finds that the subject premises located at 116 Vale Avenue, tax rep number 90139244, is a single and separate 12,815 square foot lot and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to Town Code 33115D. This board also grants relief from Town Code 33115D2 continuance for a principal rear yard setback of 30.6 feet where 39 feet is permitted for a proposed dwelling, as shown on the site plan SB-1.0 revised on September 22, 2021, and planned stated April 30, 2021, both prepared by Ryan Kesner, architect. This decision is granted contingent upon such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay, sure votes aye. Next, I have the last of the Town of Southampton Housing Authority applications. This is for 69 Old Quag Road, Suffolk County Tax Rep number 90139231.4. This application is for property located at 69 Old Quag Road Riverside. Applicant requests a single and separate determination. Applicant initially requested a variance for lot coverage to construct a single-family dwelling, but it was later determined that such request was not necessary as the ramps were removed from the calculation and the roof over porch was removed. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board finds that the subject premises located at 69 Old Quag Road Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Rep number 90139231.4, is a single and separate 7,363 square foot lot and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to Town Code 33115D, as shown on the site plan SB 1.0, prepared by Ryan T. Kesner, architect, last revised on September 21, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Ms. Kern?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
I have to recuse myself.
And sure votes aye. Next, I have an application, a decision on the application of Easy Wolf LLC. This is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map number 90179133. This application is for property located at 1341 Flying Point Road, Watermill. Applicants request variances to elevate an existing house to comply with FEMA regulations and for various other improvements. Applicant modified the plans here in response to concerns from the adjacent property owner. And as revised, this application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to allow an existing home with deck and hot tub to be raised in order to comply with FEMA regulations, to enclose an existing roof porch and to construct a second-story deck. One, 33046.2B. Two, adjacent areas. One, a principal us principal setback of 41.5 feet from the crest of the dune to the dwelling where 125 feet is required. Two, a. Two, a principal setback of 27 feet from the crest of the dune to the existing deck where 125 feet is required. Three, a setback of 38.2 feet from the crest of the dune where 125 feet is required for a proposed stairway to an existing second-floor deck that will be expanded. Four, a setback of 35.2 feet from the crest of dune where 125 feet is required for a proposed deck extension of an existing second-floor deck. Five, a setback of 51.4 feet from the crest of dune where 125 feet is required for a proposed deck extension of an existing first-floor deck. And six, a setback of 66 feet from the crest of dune where 125 feet is required to allow the conversion of an existing outdoor shower, set of stairs and a deck housing mechanical utilities to a deck with stairs over to access an existing roof deck and abandon an existing slate patio and stairs. Two, 33046.2B2B4A and 4B adjacent areas for a minimum side yard setback of 3.7 feet where 14 feet is required and a total side yard setback of 19.9 feet where 28 feet is required to construct a utility room to accommodate existing utilities. Three, 33446.2B3 adjacent areas to replace an existing outdoor shower, utility platform, deck and stairs with a new deck and stairs. Four, 33084D pyramid height for a proposed encroaching to the amount, amount of 103 cubic feet for a proposed utility room on the northwest corner of the dwelling and 403 cubic feet of new roof deck. And five, town code 3311, note six, residential districts table of dimensional regulations to allow the proposed height of the dwelling to be 42 feet 6 inches where a maximum of 42 feet is permitted. This board also grants relief from town code 33046.2B1 to allow for the addition of stairs to an existing second-floor deck to an existing and enlarged roof deck. Granted, the foregoing relief is for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Robert Smith, Squires Holden Weisenbach and Smith, last dated September 3, 2021, and the revised plans prepared by architect Joseph Padgett, last dated August 18, 2021, and is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Nay.
Um, Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. I next have a determination and I have one, two, three left. Matter of the application of Michael and Amy O'Brien. This is for property located at tax rep number 90313116. This application is for property located at 2838 Quag Riverhead Road, East Quag. Applicants seek variances to construct a swimming pool. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State town law and the town code. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from Southampton Town Zoning Code 33077D, placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses in residential districts to allow a proposed in-ground pool to be located in a rear yard with a proposed rear yard lot coverage of 27% where 20% is permitted. This relief is conditioned on the applicant's obtaining site disturbance and overclearing approval from the Southampton Town Planning Board and that this approval be obtained by the applicant prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance by the Southampton Town Building Department for the proposed in-ground pool. The proposed in-ground pool will have the dimensions and location as shown on the survey of Harold F. Tran, uh, Tranchen Jr., PC. Um, Harold Tranchen Jr. Land Surveyor dated November 3, 2003, last revised September 2, 2021, which was submitted with the application and is incorporated herein. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has heretofore, heretofore acquired or may otherwise be necessary for final approval of the proposed pool to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I have two more. Karen and Brian Coyle, this is for property located at tax rep number 90147226. This application is for property located at 27 Pearson Road, Flanders. Applicants seek variances to legalize improvements done without the benefit of a building permit by a prior owner as well as to construct a second-story addition to a pre-existing dwelling. Well, this board does not condone construction done without the benefit of a building permit. This application passes the standard, standards set forth in New York State town law and the town code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for a proposed second-story addition to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. One, 33084D pyramid relief for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 2,434 cubic feet, 2,254 cubic feet on the south side and 180 cubic feet on the north side. And two, 33083K yards for a principal total side yard of 24 feet where 30 feet is permitted. Two, for the proposed second-story balcony on the north side of the dwelling. One, 33083K for a proposed, for a principal total side yard setback of 19.4 feet where 30 feet is permitted. Three, for a proposed wood deck on the north side of the dwelling. 33076D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts and 33083C yards to allow the wood deck to be located within the total required side yard for the principal building at a setback of 14.4 feet. Four, to legalize the location of the AC unit installed on the south side of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. 33077C placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts for a total side, for, I'm sorry, for a side yard setback of 4.2 feet where 10 feet is required.
Adam, that, that section was 77G.
77G, so I stand corrected. It's 33077G. Next, five, to legalize the wood deck built without the benefit of a building permit. Town code 33076D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts and 33083C yards to allow the wood deck to be located within the total required side yard for the principal building at a setback of 13.4 feet. And six, to legalize an outdoor shower located on the south side of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. 3311 for an accessory side yard setback of four feet where 10 feet is required. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey Hatterer, last revised September 20, 2021, and the plans prepared by Raymond Rinald, architect, last revised September 28, 2021. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. I have one more. This is the-
And then I have one, so don't forget.
Really? Okay.
Yes, I have one.
Me too.
Okay, excellent. All right, so I have a decision on the application of Richard Stock. This is for property located at tax rep number 90268231. This application is for property located at 61 Kyle Road, Hampton Bays. Applicant seeks variances for a proposed covered porch, roof renovation and addition to an existing dwelling. The application passes the standard set forth in New York State town law and the town code. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from the provisions of Southampton Town Zoning Code 3311, residential districts table of dimensional regulations for principal front yard setback of 35.4 feet, 35 feet 5 and 3/4 inches where 40 feet is required for the proposed uh, covered front porch. This board additionally grants applicant relief from the provisions of zoning code 33115D1 continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of 10.66 feet, 10, 8 and 1/2 inches at the closest point of the addition northwest corner where, where 12.8 feet is permitted and a principal total side yard setback of 23.46 feet, 10 feet 8 and 1/8 inches and 12 feet 9 and 5/8, 8 inches where 32 feet is permitted for a proposed addition on the west side of the dwelling. This board also grants applicant relief from the provisions in zoning code 33084D pyramid, pyramid relief for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 8.5 cubic feet for a proposed roof renovation to the east side of the existing dwelling. This relief is conditioned upon the multi-purpose room as indicated on the site plan S100 dated February 7, 2021 and last revised on September 10, 2021, be solely used as a multi-purpose room solely and not as a garage and that the shed at the northwest corner of the subject property be removed or moved to a conforming location. The renovations to the existing residence will have the dimensional requirements on location as shown on the site plans and pyramid sketch of Stock Architecture by Richard S. Stock, architect, including pages T100, A100, A101, A102, A200 and A300, all of which are dated January 29, 2021 and last revised on June 24, 2021, and page S100 dated January 29, 2021 and last revised on September 10, 2021, which were submitted with the application and all incorporated herein. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has heretofore acquired or may otherwise be necessary for the renovations to the existing residence to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Um, I have a determination in the matter of um, 111 Schwanks LLC. The subject premises located at 111 Schwanks Road, Watermill, New York. Property is identified on Suffolk County Tax Map as 900-100-1-82.1. Applicant requests relief from provisions of the town code for a proposed detached garage. Uh, this application passes the standard set forth in the town code and the New York State town law. Therefore, the board grants applicant relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed 24 by 27-foot detached garage. One, section 330-11 residential districts table of dimensional regulations for an accessory distance from the street setback front yard of 20 feet where 90 feet is required from the easterly property line Schwanks Road. Two, section 330-11 for an accessory side yard setback of 26 feet where 30 feet is required. And three, section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts and section 330-83C yards to all the proposed, to the proposed detached garage to be located within the required front yard for the principal building. The board also grants relief from section 33094 Schedule of Off-Street Parking Space Requirements for Residential Uses and section 330-97 Supplemental Regulations for Private Garages and Off-Street Parking Areas in Residential Districts to allow seven parking spaces where a maximum of five is permitted. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hatterup, Licensed Land Surveyor dated September 22, 2021 and the architectural plans prepared by William A. Schutz, Architect PC dated September 21, 2021. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to the following conditions. One, maintenance by applicant and any future property owner of the vegetative screening as presented by said survey. And two, removal of any vegetation or structures located within the town's right-of-way and if relocated, their relocation to a conforming location height on the premises with any permits necessary prior to the issuance of any certificate for the detached garage. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has heretofore acquired or may otherwise be necessary for final approval of the proposed detached garage.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Todd Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
I am recused on this application.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I, I thought I had one, but we adjourned. It was Colley, so disregard mine.
Okay, all right.
Aw, shucks.
Yeah.
Did we get them all?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right. Well, um, not too bad, quarter to nine. Nice to see you on, on Zoom. It was nice being in person, but we're gonna be back on Zoom for a while like that, so. That's how it goes. All right, do we have a motion to close?
So move.
Motion to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?